Okay, great. Good morning. We'll call and see you in the Ventura County Air Pollution Control Board to order. And we will, we'll call, please.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Foye? Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey? Mayor Washburn?
Here.
Supervisor Saragosa?
Here.
And Councilmember Brennan?
Here. We do have a quorum.
Councilmember Saragosa, would you leave us on the question?
Yes, please follow me. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, next, um, minutes, meetings?
First meeting.
Move approval.
Got it. Any objections, any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain as to this meeting's, where I was in this room.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move to item five. Any changes in the agenda? Seeing none, no moves. Seeing that. Item six, board comments? Everybody all clocked out, good, all right, okay, moving. All right, I just had a reconsider agenda, items eight through 12. Do you deal with the appointments? Yeah.
On the board comment, just a question about the APCD's role, or APCB's role in like pesticide drift and methyl iodide and what, does it have a role when the ad commissioner is looking at approving the use of a new toxic pesticide?
Actually, the air districts do have a role in working with the Department of Pesticide Regulation as they roll out new pesticides. And as luck would have it, the air district gets one representative to look at. I was the representative for the California, for the air districts on methyl bromide. I will be the representative for chloro picorin. And as luck would have it, I'm sure they'll assign me to methyl iodide to work with Department of Pesticide Regulation on those regulations. And I do consult with Henry Gonzalez, you know, we do share a building now, and so I try to work with him and understand their issues along with both the air district's issues on reducing toxic risk.
You know, I have a concern that's shared by many, just because the peer review scientific panel all came out opposed to its use, and it seems like politics kind of came into play there a little bit. And it would just be helpful, I think, if you could keep us apprised as to the status of how things are going and what role the air board is looking at and advising and all that. I'd be interested.
All right, I should be sure to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor for those, that question. Okay, the pleasure of the board, items eight through 12.
Yeah, I'd like to move, if no one has an objection to those appointments, because Cameron Reel told for sure, that I move that we, we, what do you call it? Passed. We approve the one through 12, or eight through 12.
Okay, and second by Supervisor Saragosa. See no objections. Okay, motion carries. Are any of the appointees in the room with us? Okay, we're just going to recognize them and say thank you for signing up. Great.
I know Brandon Milan had been a candidate for Thousand Oak City Council, a nice young man with a lot of energy, and I think he'll be a good addition.
Yeah, well, thank you. And Supervisor Foye, thank you for your recommendation also, certainly from East County. Nice to have somebody from that end.
Mr. Coles, very good candidate. I've talked with him for a long time about it.
Great, very good. Okay, we'll move to item 13, Mike's public hearing regarding adoption of proposed amendments to rules two, twenty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three, one, and thirty-five, and seventy-six.
Chair Brennan, members of the board, I'm Mike Villegas, air pollution control officer. This item deals with the federal operating permit program, or Title V permits. And this program relates to the largest sources of emissions, and they're subject to a more stringent permit program from the perspective that it has additional public input and review provisions as compared to the standard California permit program for air. Currently, the district issues Title V sources related only to major sources of criteria pollutants such as nitrogen oxides, reactive organic compounds, particulate matter, sulfur oxides, and carbon monoxide. However, in January of this year, greenhouse gases actually became regulated air pollutants under the Federal Cleaner Act. And this was a, this came to a head as a result of a Supreme Court decision, EPA regulations, and interpretations of the Federal Cleaner Act by EPA. And when you think about that, suddenly, these greenhouse gases are subject to the Title V provisions of the Federal Cleaner Act. The main reason we're before your board today with this rule action is to make sure that only the largest sources of greenhouse gases in the county are subject to the federal operating permit program. Under our proposal, the vast majority of sources in Ventura County would not be subject to the Title V permitting requirements caused by their greenhouse gas emissions. Currently, the major source thresholds for criteria pollutants are in the range of fifty tons per year to a hundred tons per year. Greenhouse gases are emitted in amounts orders of magnitude higher than criteria pollutants. Therefore, EPA undertook a rulemaking known as the tailoring rule to set a greenhouse gas applicability threshold of a hundred thousand tons per year for greenhouse gases. Without this change, there would be an unreasonable burden placed on both the permitting agencies and the regulated community. These similar rule changes to ours before your board today are being undertaken by forty-nine states based on the EPA regulation. There is the potential that Congress could roll back EPA's authority to regulate these greenhouse gases. However, it did not occur in the, in the recent budget agreement. If they do take that action, staff will be ready and will monitor it, and we can suspend implementation quite quickly and return to your board with appropriate rulemaking to deal with that. But we're, at this point, we're advising that your board approve these rulemaking actions to make sure that we continue to exempt the vast majority of sources from this permit program here in Ventura County. There's two main rule actions unrelated to greenhouse gases in this rule packet. The first is we're just clarifying the terms of stationary and portable as they relate to equipment. And second, we're going to require that emergency flares are subject to permit requirements to better track their emissions. That concludes my remarks. I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Villegas. Could you just briefly, very briefly, review what happens when we have, we find an entity emitting greenhouse gases of, just sort of out of the blue, not one of these large companies or large entities that you, they're subject to the federal rules?
Actually, at this time, there would be no regulatory action taken. There would be no regulatory action taken.
Does the county have a, does the APCD have independent authority to regulate a polluter that's like a one-time burning of toxic materials or something of that nature?
Uh, that could vary. I mean, the one-time burning of...
Well, for example, in Oxnard, we have a number of issues that are, some folks are concerned about with wagon wheel demolition. And I did see that some people fear that there's toxic materials that are being emitted into the air. We're not talking about greenhouse gases, we're talking about some other stuff.
Okay.
I'm just asking what the authority is of the agency to...
Well, we can address certain, you know, obviously, what happened in the wagon wheel is probably arson. Someone set fire to some unoccupied buildings. The one thing we had done in the, in, there was one building in itself, as luck would have it, it was among association's old building, their office building. It was a, there was a fire in it, it burned most of the roof area. And what, we also knew that there was potential for asbestos in that building, and it was quite close to the, is it Meadowlark?
Yes.
Mobile Home Park. Actually, close enough that ashes were, actually, the firefighters had to wet down the roofs of some of the mobile homes.
Would that be part of, excuse me, would that be part of the permitting process?
This wouldn't be part of the permitting. We enforce what's called a national emission standard for hazardous air pollutants related to asbestos on behalf of EPA. And what happened there is we actually, an abatement contractor went in, took a look, and they, luckily, there was not asbestos in the ceiling which had burned and the roof. There was asbestos in the floor tile and the mastic, which is, in essence, the glue that holds the floor tile down. But the contractor felt that the building was structurally sound enough to get an abatement contractor in there to remove all that asbestos material prior to the demolition. And the materials were also removed from the wagon wheel hotel prior to its demolition. And the district staff actually did inspect wagon wheel on multiple occasions.
And just to clarify, I was asking about the authority to regulate, you know, sort of the one-time event among a small...
Well, if it's a planned event, we have a chance. There's, I know I recently had a, a community one that had a large bonfire with pellets on the beach, and I advised them that basically, that's not a good idea, because pellets, you don't know what was on the pellet. It could have been fifty-five gallon drum, but you don't know what, and it's probably not a good idea to let those off. So we do have some authority there.
Thank you.
Pleasure of the board. Move fast recommendation.
Second by Member Sharkey. Any opposition? Like you see none, motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move to the next item. Go ahead.
Just waiting for those slides. There they go, here we go. This is an excerpt from California Health and Safety Code, and it shows the district has authority to assess fees on stationary sources to recover our costs related to these This next slide is the language that accompanies new state mandates. What it shows is that the state legislature expects the district to assess fees to cover these mandates, because we have that fee authority. And of course, when the state comes forth with a new mandate, they don't include any funding for the air districts to implement it. With our stationary source permit fees, we currently have a hybrid program. The fees are based on emission fees, however, we do have a minimum amount. We have a minimum fee that's paid by approximately two-thirds of the sources in the county. I'd also like to point out, even though we have emission fees, and it is intuitive that as air gets cleaner, those emissions go down, that would drive your revenue down. But what's happened is we've implemented just about every feasible measure for stationary sources, and those fees have actually become stable. On the permit processing side, it's actually based on the hourly time that our engineer spends processing that permit. These fees cover much more than our permit program. They also cover our inspection and enforcement program, our planning, the development of our air quality management plan, including strategy development for the control measures and emission inventory. They also need to cover rule development efforts related to stationary sources, such as the rule your board just approved, and of course, overhead. Staff is proposing a very modest two percent fee increase in renewal fees, and we did not have a fee increase last year. As I said before, most sources, two-thirds of the sources on permit, will only pay, see an increase of ten dollars per year. This would result in additional forty-three thousand dollars in revenue for the district. Why are we proposing a fee increase at this time? Well, our budget projection shows we're going to have a net cost of approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the upcoming fiscal year. Conservatively, you could say that we're going to assess it, receive an additional a hundred thousand dollars from fines and penalties, which leaves us with a shortfall of approximately sixty-six thousand dollars. This forty-three thousand dollars in additional revenue will basically balance the budget. We'd still use a small amount from our fund balance, but it's quite healthy at this time. And if there's, if we needed more justification, I just received an email no less than an hour ago stating that in the budget deal, it looks like any increase that the president had suggested for state and local permitting agencies was cleaned off the table on that one, it looks like we'll be seeing a small decrease in our federal grant. The other thing we're trying to do is to avoid the need for significant future increases. And the other important point to remember is, under State and Health and Safety Code, the district is limited to increase fees by only fifteen percent in any one year. Further, our emission fees, our permit fees, are only thirty percent of the district's revenue, so our ability to increase fees significantly in any one year are quite limited. This last slide graphically shows the fees we collected in fiscal year nineteen ninety-nine one at a level of two-point-four-five million dollars. If you adjust that for inflation, the fees collected in that year would equate to four-point-one million dollars in today's dollars. Even with the fee increase, staff is proposing to collect approximately two-point-two million dollars in the upcoming fiscal year. And that concludes my remarks.
Mike, before, just one quick question, maybe a little clarification. Says about, probably three-quarters of permities would only be paying an increase of about ten dollars. Is that about right?
That's correct, two-thirds.
So, which is valid, but what would you think, say, let's say, let's go to the top end, what's the increase for, substantial increase, say, for a larger entity, or, you know, ten dollars doesn't seem like much, but I worry about what's the other side of it?
We looked, I looked at a large oilfield operation, and they were looking at about a two-thousand dollar increase they were paying, close to...
Cal Luthran's a good example.
What was that?
Cal Luthran's a good example.
Cal.
What was their increase?
Let's see, what they were paying.
Cal Luthran?
They're very close to a little...
Cal, it's pretty close to ten dollars.
Gotcha, okay. So largest increase would be two thousand. Okay, thank you, pre-clarification. Supervisor Long, you had a question?
What else have we done? I mean, raising fees is a pretty tough thing to do to anybody these days, but what else have we done in the budget to try to make up these numbers?
Well, I think the thing we just, we had at the last meeting is the management organization that's going to eliminate a position and save the district approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. So, when you look at that, more than three-quarters of trying to close the budget was due staff reduction and less than twenty-five percent due revenue enhancements.
Right. And then you'd also said that some of this work that we've done is a lot less polluting, a lot less, so are we doing less work to try to do these permits? Is there less requirements?
Actually, the permitting's been fairly stable, because the rule, we're not adopting a whole lot of new regulations that require changes to the permits, but there's, there are, there's quite a bit of work still to be done. And as for the district, it's really not the permitting side that's driving our work, it's the fact that they're, you know, the federal government is proposing to tighten the standards, a lot of work on the control measure development and the planning side to have an air quality management plan to meet these new requirements. And it looks like we'll be getting some additional work under AB thirty-two for greenhouse gases. But there should be some revenue, it probably won't be adequate to cover all the work, is how it's worked out in the past. But on the compliance side, it's just, as we, as this county's continued to grow, I call it the Los Angelesification of Ventura County. Complaints tend to, the number of complaints we receive is just continues to climb every year. Just agricultural, urban interface, neighbors, somebody burned something in the, I just, it's amazing the amount of complaints we get. You just, you know, the wagon wheel incident took quite a bit of staff time. People became very concerned when ash fell on their house and they saw a building that they had heard might contain asbestos. And, you know, it eats up quite a bit of resources, and there really isn't a way to recoup those, those costs.
Okay. Just to reiterate what the chair mentioned, that out of the thirteen-hundred or so facilities, only four-hundred plus will pay the, above the minimum?
Yeah, it's, out of thirteen-hundred and eighty-eight facilities...
And so it's nine-twenty-seven that are under minimum, so it's what, four-hundred plus that would pay above the...
Yes.
Okay.
Let me ask one more. If you didn't get the fee, you'd have to make some other adjustments. What other adjustments would you make?
We would withdraw, we would draw down the fund balance. At this time, it's probably okay to do that, but...
How much do you have in that balance now? You have a pretty good amount, as I recall.
Approximately nine million.
Nine million dollars, yeah. And that may be a worthwhile thing to do during a time like this, and we're trying to keep everybody's fees down. I mean, for, for the university to even write you a letter for a ten-dollar fee, it must mean that there's a lot of those issues out there that people are really concerned about.
Actually, it seemed that that letter, when you read it, you could just feel the frustration. It seemed that they were, they were in a development project, they said they were in a development project, and the permit fees were becoming exorbitant. And I'm not sure it was a new dormitory or the football stadium, but it certainly wasn't air district-related, because we had no permit action.
No, I think you're probably right, that it's just all these permitting fees that, I mean, you think about what it takes to do anymore, it's just, you know, the government has an awful lot of fees to, just trying to do a project, and it's, it's killing these people. And I think probably a lot of it is frustration, because it costs them a lot more than ten dollars to write that letter. So, I mean, they spend a lot more money to do that, but I think you're probably right. But I, I agree, at some point, we've got to try to figure out how we can take some of this. And I appreciate you saying that, you know, the feds are putting more of this on, because I mean, you run a very efficient agency and required to, more of the stuff that comes from the feds, but it is tough to keep asking people, when they're trying to survive, I talk to the president over there, it's, you know, it's tough trying to find the money for these kids, so...
When we did have the public workshop, we did only have one attendee, an oilfield, an overall, the Western States Petroleum Association attended, they felt it was reasonable, especially in light of the fact we held off on any fee increase last year.
Question, you've got a lot more than some, every year they're coming with fees, you know, so...
Supervisor Bennett?
I'd like to point out three things. Number one, I think that our pollution control district, Mike in particular, has really done a good job of trying to constantly ratchet down here. So, we've seen positions being eliminated, so I think we've got a good track record from that standpoint. The second thing is, we as a board have adopted a policy that says we would prefer to have small incremental increases rather than not having increases for a number of years and then come in and get, have to have a big increase and have the real frustration come out in that kind of environment. So this would be consistent with that policy. I'm not saying we have a small increase if we absolutely don't need it, but where we have it, and certainly combined with the same time that we're cutting out a staff position, I think that that, there feels like there's an appropriate balance. And then the third thing is, this district has a great relation with the regulated community. And we, I think we, I think that's something that we really appreciate, it allows good government policies to get instituted. I think it makes sense for us, the regulated community is, is overall been supportive of this, a small increase like this, and the other efforts that have been done. So with all of that, I think that this is a good policy. There's, I don't want to cut off discussion, but I'd be happy to make the motion to approve this recommendation.
Got a second, Member Sharkey? Okay, further discussion?
Just had one comment. I did hear from a couple of farmers in my community, and they were upset about the burden. They feel, what I was told was that they're getting twenty-five dollars a box for oranges, and they're just barely surviving. So, you know, that's the issue I have with, with the constant increase of fees, and I appreciate your efforts to keep your budget balanced in, in a reasonable fashion, because you are doing a good job, but it is an issue in my community, in the farming community.
Just to let you know, we do not permit very many agricultural operations in general. Most of the agricultural engines that are used to pump water that, actually, we do regulate, we put under a registration program to keep them from paying the higher cost of a permit, and that we are not proposing any increases to those registration fees.
If I could ask one more question. The nine million you have in your reserves, has that been pretty constant for the last few years?
It's been, it's been climbing, because we did a very good job of containing costs, and the federal grant was running pretty steady.
And then on the air side, we've seen it even with Water District, they've used some of that to help mitigate some of these rates over the years. So, I mean, our, what's the total budget in your department as well?
About eight million.
Eight million dollars, so we have over a hundred percent of our whole annual budget in reserves. I mean, it's a testament that you've been able to do that, so I appreciate what you guys have done. But this may be a time that we could use some of that, instead of having money just sit there and sit there, that we could probably use some of that to help go with these fees. I agree with Supervisor Bennett, we don't want to get to a point where all of a sudden our fees have to jump. We've seen some of that issue, but it may be in a, in a way that we don't do anything with this fee this year, and we use some of that to do that. I mean, because again, they're climbing every year, like you said, and at some point, you can have all the money in the world in the bank, but people are having a hard time, as she said, paying their fees and getting frustrated with it. I think that's, that's an important piece, that part of that was during tough times, hopefully we could use some of those things.
Just to let you know, I certainly plan to use some of that fund balance to, basically to mitigate the need for fee increases, but the challenge I'm seeing is our federal grant, obviously, when you look at what's happening in Congress, I expect to see it decrease next year. I also know that as, they're going to reallocate those funds, and there are some air districts that are not receiving grant monies in this state of California, so I expect them to just get some of that funding, and since the pie's going to be smaller and there's going to be more pieces cut from it, I'd expect a hit on our federal grant next year, so I'm trying to kind of prepare for that, so I can do small increases and still work through that, using the fund balance and some small...
But don't we also have, if they're not going to fund, we've also come to this whole thing, I think statewide, if they're not going to fund things, we're just not going to do them at some point, or where...
One of the difficult things in air quality is the way they set up the mandates. You really can't go back to the federal government and say, I'm not going to do this, because the way the Federal Cleaner Act works, if you don't do the work, the first thing they do is they, what they hit you with sanctions. And the first thing they do is they increase your offset threshold, meaning if we wanted to bring a new business to help our economy out of Ventura County, right now, they might need to offset at one-point-two to one, you know, one-point-two tons for every ton of increase, that they'll increase that up to a level of about one-point-five. And that when it makes, it makes Ventura County suddenly look like an area where you just don't want to do business, you certainly won't want to bring in a new facility there. And that would be, I think that's really bad policy for the economy.
And that's part of their leverage they try to use on you.
And it's written straight into the Federal Cleaner Act. And I'll admit to you that the Federal Cleaner Act needs to be updated, you know, if you, we're working from a playbook from the nineteen-seventies, where they felt the states weren't going to follow along, and you had to, you know, push them along. California's been a leader, they haven't come kicking and screaming on this program, they led the nation. The other thing they do is if you still haven't done what they asked you to do, then, then they take your highway funds. And I just don't want to be the person responsible for that.
Just, just two, two quick responses and one, unlike the state programs where you can say, hey, we're just not going to do that program, we don't have a choice. you can say, "Hey, we're just not going to do that program," we don't have a choice with the Clean Air Act. We, we'll have to do it and there's all kinds of penalties that would be much worse for us. And two, when you have small, small cities, small districts, you need to have a substantial reserve because you burn through things really fast when the problem comes. And I think it's real possible that real problems are, I mean, it's real likely problems are going to be coming. The federal government cutbacks are going to be severe and the state cutbacks are going to be severe and yet everybody's still going to want air quality protected in Ventura County. And so I think this is, it's a small thing, it's not enough money for us probably to be spending this much time talking about, but it, but on the other hand, it's, I think it, it is an important concept or principle for us to hang on to, so.
Before we leave the topic, the Heritage Valley area might gain from what's happening in Florida with all the silids and all the trees disappearing down there, fruit trees. You may find oranges are going to go up in cost.
You would have thought that.
Yep, you really would.
Okay, well, I think we've had enough discussion. Should we have a roll call votes? Roll call vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Foy?
No.
Mayor Morgan?
No.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yes.
Mayor Washburn?
No.
Supervisor Saragosa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brennan?
Yes. Member Charis, thank you. We will move on to the next item.
It'll be coming, slides will be coming right up. This next item deals with the California Air Resources Board's Ocean Going Vessel Regulation and a request by staff to have a support letter signed by Chair Brennan sent to the California Air Resources Board to support some upcoming amendments. This regulation was adopted in two thousand eight and it required the use of low sulfur fuel instead of existing bunker fuel in ship main engines, auxiliary engines, and auxiliary boilers. And just to put a perspective on, diesel that you would be burning in an on-road vehicle probably is capped at about five hundred parts per million and in California, you're probably well under a hundred parts per million. Bunker fuel, which is using these ship engines, which are giant diesel engines, has a sulfur content not in the hundreds, but about twenty-five thousand parts per million sulfur. It's really a refinery byproduct. And what this regulation requires is that they use a low sulfur fuel capped at five thousand parts per million. It was envisioned that they would receive significant emission reductions. The reduction in toxic diesel particulate of eighty-three percent from this regulation, sulfur oxides by ninety-six percent, and NOx by six percent. And the idea why California moved first is that they realized that the federal government working with the International Maritime Organization was going to set up an emission control area off of the entire west coast, but that would not come into effect until two thousand fifteen.
And let me, is that the whole coast, up in Oregon, Washington, the whole thing?
It, it even covers Canada.
It does, okay.
This one only, the state one obviously only covers California. It applies to both U.S. and foreign flagged vessels and it's set up in an emission control area, in essence, a low sulfur fuel area, within twenty-four nautical miles of the California What happened when it was implemented, however, is that many vessel operators decided not to stay in the existing channel route. As a matter of fact, up to fifty percent of the vessels that were approaching the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles took a southern route through the Navy's test range. And the change was driven by a cost differential. Bottom line, the low sulfur fuel costs more than the existing bunker fuel. Bunker fuel is very inexpensive, as I said, it's basically a petroleum waste product and the refineries look at it as, they're almost getting rid of a hazardous waste and they're making a few pennies on it, so it's, it's a good deal for them. But this change in the vessel routing pattern reduced the anticipated emission reductions, so we didn't achieve the emission reductions. Further, we had ships passing through the Navy's test range, which has the potential to disrupt or delay the Navy's operations. And this, this map shows exactly what happened. You see the inside channel route, which was the, most of the vessels used until the rule was implemented in July two thousand nine, and about half the vessels started taking this outer route right through the Navy's test range as they approached the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. Did not really play an issue in the vessels approaching Port Wayneimi. So what ARB is proposing to do is to amend the rule to recapture those emission reductions and to reduce traffic through the Navy's test range. And this slide graphically shows what they're trying to do. By extending the twenty-four nautical mile zone, not just off the coastline, but also around the Channel Islands, it takes away the incentive to use the southern route. Further, they created this window up off the western portion of Santa Barbara County and you're not required to use the low sulfur fuel in that area. What it does is it shortens the run in the Channel Island route, so basically it will be less expensive to use the low sulfur fuel, stay in the channel than it will be to try to take a southern route around the control zone. I think it's created a win-win for both air quality and for the Navy. And based on this, I think that we should be sending a, a letter up to the Chair of the California Air Resources Board when this regulation reaches their board. And we'll finalize that regulation for Chair Brennan's signature as soon as that agenda is set. And I just also want to note that Supervisor Kathy Long and the Regional Defense Partnership for the Twenty-First Century have been very active in trying to get a resolution to this and this is, they are supportive of this rule action by the Air Resources Board.
Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Vegas, for bringing this forward and as mentioned, Councilmember John Sharkey, myself and others have worked with the, both the Navy and CARB on finding a better solution, particularly to deal with the missile test range issue that we predicted was going to be impacted and, and it clearly was and is. And I, and I'll say that the staff at CARB has done an excellent job in reaching out to the vessel shippers and the, and the impacted community on this. And at the hearing that we attended where the draft was out and comments were accepted prior to it going to the full CARB board in May, there was concurrence by the communities. And I'll say it was the environmental communities, the, the shippers and, and the staff. So I, I think it has been good work and a good solution here and I, and I would, I think it would be good for us to support this. It's obviously our backyard that we're talking about here, so I would certainly support the action.
I'd like to also add to the supervisor's comments, you know, we just got back from D.C. and we were talking to the policymakers there in Washington, Feinstein, Boxer, Gallagher Lee and Capps and, and also the military individuals at the Pentagon regarding this concern, you know, that, that twenty-four miles and, or the use of the southern route really hampers the, the missile testing range at Maguoso. I think it's, it's good that we support this. And there's quite a few of us that went to, to D.C. to, to talk to those policymakers.
Member Ramirez?
Yes, I, I would definitely support this. I think it's excellent solution and we have to, as we heard, I was here when there was a presentation from the Navy about encroachment. This is another form of encroachment and they have also come, the Navy folks have come to the city of Oxnard and they've certainly invited all elected officials in the vicinity to come and be really on top of encroachment issues and I think this is perfectly plays into that. Their concern, want to keep our base viable and everything that affects it, we should be concerned about because it's a major economic force in our community. So I like it, cleaner air and it will, this seems like this is a kind of bad emissions that will really affect even eastern county more and the folks down, up the, up the river because that's where the bad air goes. So, I, I like, I appreciate the work that's been done and I would support that.
Just a question, could you clarify the window for me a little bit more here?
It's purely an economic, economic based change.
Right. Exactly where does it end?
I believe, I believe it was somewhere between sixteen and eighteen nautical miles. That closest part of the window is about sixteen to eighteen nautical miles from the Santa Barbara coastline.
And then, and then when they get down...
As soon as they come out of the window into the channel, they need to be on the low sulfur fuel.
Right. So the window is that, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand geographically where that is.
It's above, just above Point Conception there. Yeah, just probably off of Vandenberg, off that area.
All right. Just call a notch, didn't they, what'd they call them at the notch?
This is an ARB slide.
Window notch. We got feds in D.C. that work.
Okay, notch, window. I like notch better, actually.
So then when they get down to Point Conception and then they start into the channel itself and they're have, going to have to convert over to...
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I would just note that Mayor Morgan and myself certainly have been members of the basinwide group, which is San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara County and Ventura County. And this was, issue came about because Santa Barbara County was actually fifty percent of their air emissions comes from offshore, from the ships offshore and they were on the verge of being out of attainment. So obviously you push one side, it kind of created something else. So I'm just happy, Mike, that you were able to, with your expertise and certainly being an ex-Navy guy, kind of be able to talk the jargon and work with them and help create this, this solution to keep our base viable. So I think out of all that came and Santa Barbara's, and we get low sulfur fuel use once it's in the boat, generally speaking, they're going to learn how to use it and use it in other ports and benefit also on the coast. So, pleasure of the board on this item?
Motion to support the recommended action.
Okay, seconded by Supervisor Saragosa. And any objections? Seeing none, motion carries, thank you. And I should note, I didn't have any comment cards placed in front of me on public speakers, so I was pretty confident, I apologize for not asking, but I realize you do such a great job, you usually get them right on my desk when they come up, so thank you. I wanted to note that, there were no public comments on these items. Okay, move to the next item, Mike?
This is the annual new source review rule that's required pursuant to our Rule twenty-six eleven. New source review is the program that governs how new facilities move into the county or existing facilities are modified or expanded. It has two main components. First, best available control technology, which means anytime you increase emissions with a new facility or an expansion, you install the best available control technology to mitigate those emissions. Of course, there'll still be some element of emission increase and that element of emission increase is subject to the second provision known as offsets. And what happens there, let's say you were going to increase by five tons per year at a facility, you would have to offset that with a decrease that was either banked in our bank or some other modifications to your facility before you could receive your permit. And that's made, to make sure that we continue to make progress towards attaining the standards. Under California law, when you bank an emission reduction credit, it needs to be what they call surplus. That means it needs to exceed all the standards, rules and requirements, federal, state and district, before you can deposit it in the bank. Means you've gone beyond the rulebook with the submission reduction. And it's, we check whether or not it's surplus at the time you bank it. Under federal policy, EPA wants those credits to be surplus to all regulations at the time they're used. And you think of that federal policy, what it does is it, you say you deposited ten tons in the bank ten years ago, you, under the federal policy, you really don't know the value anymore and it creates regulatory uncertainty because over time controls are improving, so when you withdraw it, it's going to be reduced by some amount. So creates a lot of regulatory uncertainty. When we saw this problem, several air districts, including ours, developed what's called an equivalency program. And what we do is we demonstrate to EPA that our offsetting program is at least as stringent as the federal program. This provides some measure of regulatory relief to the regulated community. If somebody wanted to expand a major facility or bring a new major facility in, once we've demonstrated equivalency, they would not need to use credits that are surplus at the time of use, they could use standard California credits. And the district has again demonstrated equivalency. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, questions? Pleasure, pleasure of the board? Second, okay. Motion by Supervisor Saragosa, seconded by Mayor Morgan. Okay, any objections? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Move to item seventeen.
Okay. In two thousand seven, a group of Cal Poly Pomona students developed a vision plan for the city of Ventura. It was entitled, "Transforming Urban Environments for a Post-Peak Oil Future." This term, post-peak oil, refers to the situation where global oil production has peaked in your, in your past that way and then supply is going to become more and more constrained over time. The vision plan included concepts such as having a large portion of, of the population living near services so they would not need to drive as much and it could reduce vehicle miles traveled. This would basically result in reduced criteria pollutant emissions and greenhouse gas emissions. However, the vision plan was really just a vision plan and it didn't include any strategies to achieve the goals. Now, Cal Poly Pomona is proposing the development of an action plan for the city of Ventura to achieve these goals over time. The city of Ventura is contributing seventy-five hundred dollars to this effort and this action plan most likely would be applicable to other communities in Ventura County. District staff is proposing to contribute to this effort at a level of five thousand dollars for work related to reducing motor vehicle emissions. This motor vehicle work would consist of developing strategies to reduce vehicle miles traveled and the effort would be consistent with the district's efforts to reduce criteria pollutants and the goals of AB thirty-two and SB three seventy-five of the respective greenhouse gases. In addition, the effort would seek methods to improve public transportation options. We're proposing the use of DMV registration funds and this is consistent with the requirements under California Health and Safety Code where we can only use them for motor vehicle-related projects. I'd also like to point out, these monies, we actually do need to pass through it in our, our funds. We can use internally motor vehicle fees for a lot of our work related to, if motor vehicles account for fifty percent of the pollution, we can use them to offset fifty percent of our monitoring costs and some of our public outreach programs, et cetera, but there is a portion we need to pass through, so there won't be a direct fiscal impact of the district. That's all I have.
Let me just start off quickly. I wanted to say we partnered with U.C. Davis on our agricultural, I think the opportunity to partner with Cal Poly Pomona. I brought this to Mike when students came and said they wanted to follow up on a plan. And while we all have lots of great plans, most of the time, we don't have the action plans to go with them. And so this was a follow-up to that, that said that could work in tandem and help us implement some programs that we could get on the ground. And I know students would love to come and give a, a final presentation of their work when, when it's called. So, questions?
I, I have a comment and I think it's wonderful. I have some experience with graduate students out of Cal Poly Pomona and they helped folks in Oxnard create a vision plan for Ormond Beach wetlands and in terms of the gateway project. So they, it's really nice to get them involved in anything that we can. I'd like to just really encourage support for this because I think I spent more than fifty dollars to fill up my little car the other day, just going back and forth around the city and the county and we definitely need to be, not be complacent about the cost associated with higher gas prices and I, I think it's fabulous and I hope that other cities take, take advantage of these opportunities.
Mayor Morgan?
I'd like to know, we have a study going on now, our future transportation plan for Ventura County and includes the cities. Every city is included in each little, for instance, Camarillo's one, Oxnard, Wayneimi's one, Ventura's one, I think there's eight of them. And we're going, we paid a consultant to look at a lot of these things. It all comes under social services, comes under transportation, it comes under all the other things, business. Is this similar to what's going to go on in each one of these different cities?
I'm not, actually I don't have the expertise to answer that one, certainly. I think what they're doing here is, is really trying to kind of mesh the land use, transit and services together. That's what really this, this effort by Cal Poly Pomona is focused on.
That's what this other thing is doing also. I don't know if you've had your mailers yet about this. VCTC's, I'd say, who's his, Dan?
Beal.
Dan Beal, yeah. Will be here, will be doing this, he's already talked to me. He's already talked to me. And we're already setting up committees. Camarillo was setting our committee up now with all different areas, with transportation and chamber for business and other things to address these. And so, I'm wondering if, Oxnard has it coming too. I don't know who got your representative this.
I think what they're doing is they're putting together local advisory groups in the different areas of the county to get advice on the priorities of citizens regarding transportation, and they can use that towards looking at prioritizing funding. But what I see different about this and having had a presentation on this city of Ventura post-peak oil presentation, it really did concentrate a lot about creative and innovative land uses that would reduce the need to ever use a car. And I think when you combine that with their thought about non-motorized transportation, you're really a little bit more far-fetched from what Dan Beal is looking at. I think one of the benefits of this is not just to the city of Ventura that's doing this study, but just by having this presentation in the East County from these, you know, report that these college students put together, helped open some minds out in the East County also about how we can do land use that is more, I guess, sustainable would be a way to look at it. Looking forward to seeing how they come up with it. It was very creative, and it definitely, you know, made a memorable presentation.
I have a little bit of difference in that because, have you read the letter yet from Dan Beal?
I've been in communication with him a lot since.
But you talk, you talk about social services, business, alternate forms of transportation. It's not just about what the people here want to see. It's a lot of different areas he's dealing with and how they interact. It's not just what you're saying. It's not that simple. And I've talked to him about that. That's why I'm trying to get different people from different areas of expertise in this committee. So, it's, horses will come back, huh?
I'm glad to do that.
Well, maybe the students could work in tandem or at least get their input into that piece too, because one of the good things are, they bring innovation and out-of-the-box thinking sometimes that can be integrated into forward thinking.
Just going to admit, you know, what VCTC's doing also.
Good idea, Chair.
Okay. Member Washburn?
Yeah, I just want to have two things. First, I just want to let everybody know, I'm very familiar with peak oil. I worked in the oil industry for 21 years, and five to six years of that I spent in reserve studies. So, I'm pretty familiar with it, so I'm in support of looking at this. And I think it takes the VCT stuff a step further in addressing food issues. And I also, my question is, how can I get a copy of this vision plan?
It's actually on the city's website.
Is it?
And you might actually, if you wouldn't mind, I had an interesting discussion yesterday with the governor about peak oil, and maybe you would want to forward that letter to him. He seems to think that we haven't reached peak oil yet, so that was an interesting.
I think we reached it in 2005.
I thought we had too, but anyway. Yes, thank you. Pleasure of the board?
Second.
Any opposition? Great, seen none, thank you. Ananamous, thank you, Mike. We'll move to item 18.
Okay, real quick, this is just implementation of the first phase of the Management Reorganization and Secession Plan. We promoted two individuals into their new management slots. We now have a manager of monitoring and one of engineering. They're both doing exemplary work, and we're deleting the positions they were promoted from as we laid out in the plan. We'd be deleting a supervising air quality meteorologist position and a supervising air quality engineer position. That's all I have.
Okay, and second by Member Sharkey? Okay. Any opposition? Seen none? Item carries. Next item is a receivable file. Pleasure of the board?
We're receiving files.
Thank you. And then, next item is our cancellation of the May meeting. I know we'll all want to.
Well, actually, a little wrinkle. Just last week, I was notified of a change to the SEIU agreement, and Labor Relations needs to bring that item before your board on May 10. And I'll try to add, we've got a couple, they weren't time-critical air items, but I'll try to get them on that agenda also to balance it out.
Great, we will have a meeting May 10th, okay?
Okay.
All right, that being the, we'll adjourn. Thank you. Board for a great discussion.
And we have standing committee now?
We do, thank you. Standing committee.
I'm sorry. [inaudible]. All right. Well, we'll see you guys later. Bye.